Good evening and welcome to a regular City Council, Willits City Council meeting. We are going to report out, we had a special meeting at 5:30 where correction was given to staff. We're going to start with Buffy Wright, who just finished a term on the tribal council and will lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. And we're pleased to announce the government voted to open up again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Buffy. Thank you, everyone.
Councilmember Burton?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Present.
Stransky?
Yes.
Almanis?
Here.
Almanis.
Here.
The City Council welcomes input from the audience. If there is a matter of business on the agenda that you're interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The Brown Act regulations do not allow action to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda.
Okay, and with the council's approval on our department recommendation action items, I'm going to move item B up to the top because the majority of people are here for the Willits Municipal Code Mobile Vendors, and so we'll talk about that, then we'll go to the fire department thing. And with that in mind, I'm going, we're going to have public comment for any item that's not on the agenda, and after that, if there's anybody who would like to comment on any item that is on the agenda, but you're in a hurry and you have to run, I'd love to hear your comments. So is there anybody who would like to comment or make any kind of three-minute comment on any item that's not on the agenda? Robin? Welcome.
Robin Leeler. I thought that Willits was getting a conservative city council that would rein in a corrupt city manager and assistant manager, who were both lining their pockets and padding their retirements. Instead, the city has gotten a council that is using the incompetent city attorney who used to serve the city manager's corruption to serve their own crony corruption. Bruce Burton has been acting outside of the law by pressuring city staff personally in their offices and conspiring with the city manager to advance a project that both Burton and Rod Wilburn have an interest in. Then both of them make a show of recusing themselves in the council meeting to avoid conflict of interest. Mayor Alman orchestrates a chorus of a dozen non-city residents singing the praises of a project that enriches people from Santa Cruz to Del Norte County, adds no jobs to the Willits economy, adds no revenue to the city budget, converts one of the best buildable housing sites in the city limits into heavy industrial, right next to the high school, no less, uses 14 million gallons of either city or groundwater, and not coincidentally advances the business interests of both Burton and Wilburn. Stransky makes some cogent conservative objections and votes for the blasted thing anyway. You can watch him second the motion on the Willits Community TV public video of the October 8th council meeting. Six months ago, Burton led the council to cut the expected raise in city water rates as a setup for these folks, costing the city budget a quarter million dollars a year. The council blithely approved paying the city attorney half a million dollars for personal legal advice to the city managers in support of the past corruption. The entire council voted for a now interim manager who is setting up the city budget and city staffing to support his engineering consulting business for years to come. He maneuvered with the previous city manager to begin the process. Everybody on the council protected the padded retirement of old assistant city manager, position that never did really exist, who had pursued vendetta politics blatantly enough to warrant a grand jury report. There is nothing conservative about any of this. Almanis may not understand it all or doesn't care. My guess is that all of the long-term setup, short-term notice, and backroom irregularities would make a lawsuit to kill this decision feasible. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Robin Leeler and Bruce Hilbach-Barger.
Thank you very much, Robin. Is there anybody else who would like to make, have a comment on anything which is not on the agenda? Is there anybody who would like to talk about anything that is on the agenda, but you're in a hurry? Okay, public input, right. For this matter is closed. Let's move on to public matters discussion and introduction of ordinance by title only and ordinance of the City of Willits adopting a 2025 edition of the California Fire Code Part 9 with amendments, as well as a 2025 edition of the Willits of California Wildland Urban Interface Code Part 7. Presenter, Chief Alvarez. Chief.
I'm not sure it matters. I mean, they got to state it before Robin's thing.
Yeah. Chief.
Were you going to postpone this item?
No, no, yeah, we're, no, we're going to, on the proposed ordinance of the water ordinance, so let's go with this one. Thank you.
Okay.
So just introduce yourself and...
So, good evening. I'm Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council. My name is Matt Kaiser. I'm the fire code official for the City of Akiya. However, this evening, am I not on?
It's on. It's not an amplifier, it's for the video.
However, this evening, I'm representing with Chief Alvarez, the Little Lake Fire District. We assisted the Little Lake Fire District in their updating and their adoption of the 2025 Fire Code, and we would like to do the same thing within the city limits. The goal of the ordinance is so that, as you know, the fire district overlays the city. We'd like to have the exact same rules and regulations within the city and also within the district. So that's why we're here this evening. This is an introduction. I will answer any questions that anyone has. At our next scheduled meeting, we'd like to have the adoption. So what you'll have in front of you is a resolution and ordinance. The resolution of findings is the vehicle that we use in order to change, make any changes to the existing fire code that's adopted by the state. The state adopts a fire code every three years. We're on that cycle now. What's new to the state is the WUI code. We, as a fire district or as a city, are not making any changes to that WUI code. We are not making any new changes to the fire code from what the fire district has adopted in the past. So you won't see any changes as far as sprinkler requirements or hazardous materials requirements or anything like that. What you will see in those findings is a list of fire codes. And I think we had a question on where those codes are. Those codes are what's in the ordinance. So as you go through the ordinance, that coincides with the list of codes that are on the findings page. We can go through those one by one. We can, whatever pleases the council, I'm happy to go through, and we can do a brief description of each one of them and see exactly where we're at. But again, the important takeaway is that we're not changing anything from what we've done in the past. We're just, this is routine and ordinary. We're updating the code as it will be every three years.
Sure. Chair.
Is it state fire code? Is that, if I went to look it up online?
Uniform.
Are you, are you uniform?
It's the, used to be the uniform fire code. It's now the California Fire Code, and it's adopted by the state every three years. The current cycle is the 2025 Fire Code, which gets adopted January 1st of 2021. So we want to make sure that we have our ducks in a row so that when that does get adopted, it's the same within the district and the city.
You said, January 2021 or 2026?
Yes, sir.
No, you said 2021.
Oh.
Is it 2026?
2026, yeah, sorry.
So I guess I'm confused. If, you're saying there are no changes, but you want us to accept the changes over here?
So there's no changes from what we previously had. So the changes that are within the fire code have been within the fire code within the district and the city for the last 10, 15, 20 years. So things like, things like a sprinkler ordinance of a building over 5,000 square feet, we didn't change that. It's always been like that within the fire district. It's still the same. We didn't make anything more restrictive than what was already here. Does that make sense?
So why is it being reintroduced tonight?
Because every three years, as the code changes, we have to update the ordinance, and that's why we're here this evening.
So just updating the ordinance, but there's no changes?
Correct, but it's a whole new ordinance. One replaces the next one, but there's no changes from the previous one. I'm not sure if we did this previously in the city three years ago or not, but the fire district has done it for the last, you know, 40, 50 years. There's been no changes from the previous code cycle that the fire district did. We're now bringing it also to the city so that everything's the same across the board.
I believe we did adopt the change.
Okay.
It does happen periodically.
Yeah, the last one was in 2019 with Chris Willis.
Okay. So it's not going to cost anymore to build a house if we approve it?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
I, I mean, I asked, I may, I mean, I was one that asked, and I still, I simply want to know what these dozen section numbers refer to and what they are. I can't vote on, I can't vote affirmatively on something that I haven't reviewed, and so I...
So you don't, we're not voting tonight? Can I answer that question?
Well, you could, I've asked it since Monday, and the answer is, somebody send me the, these fire codes and so I can review them. I mean, that's...
Those codes directly respond to the ordinance. They're in the ordinance.
They're not in the, they're not in the handout that I have.
Yeah, all we get are numbers. And so it's referring to is the actual definition.
So you should have a copy of the ordinance, which obviously you don't. You'll be provided one. I have a couple here.
We have ordinance in our, well, in the electronic version of our...
So those, those numbers correspond with the ordinance. I can run through a couple of them. Nothing here is super substantial. Section 503 in the fire code deals with fire department access. So the state does not adopt that because the state doesn't deal with fire department access on like a single-family home.
It is in the electronic version.
So we want to bring that into our district so that we can, we can make sure we have a standard there for folks.
It's in the, in the body of the...
Okay.
Well, I went through it, and I went through all 86 pages of my agenda summary. I did not find anything. And this, this has sections 103 and 112. It doesn't even go up to 500.
I will pull fire...
Oh, there goes 1,200. Maybe, maybe it does.
It's on the PDF for agenda packet.
Here it is.
It's about smack in the middle of it.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, I'd like, I mean, I think this doesn't go into effect until 2026 or doesn't become a...
Becomes effective January 1st, 2026. We're a little behind the curve here. It'll go into effect 30 days after adoption. So I believe our next meeting is December 12th. So then it would be January 12th. Technically, it would go into effect, so we'd have a little air gap there of about 12 days. But like I said, nothing's changing, so the same rules and regulations that were there to build a house today will be the same ones moving forward, with the exception of anything that state has changed that we have no control over. But the district hasn't changed anything.
That's, that, I guess I'd like a little expansion up because when I sat on the council years ago, the changes to the fire code were, were not mandatory by a local agency. They were recommended, but, but the local fire district could establish its own building code requirements. And now I'm, the way this reads, it can only adopt things that are more restrictive, not less restrictive. I'm really looking at, I mean, this is, you know, we're really fighting the issue of affordability in housing, and there's, it comes in a variety of forms as what makes housing more expensive. And so I'm, I'm just trying to monitor that and see that we're not being sucked into rules and regulations at the state level that aren't relevant to us in a degree that causes our houses to be more expensive than they already are. That's my concern and my interest.
So this is a first reading, and so at our December meeting, will you be here to answer questions?
Yeah.
All right. So go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can I take two minutes?
Sure.
Just, I understand, I hear everything you're saying.
Yeah.
Completely understand it. Just to be clear on these, so some of these sections are things like an address sign.
Yeah, I'm seeing them now.
Okay, it needs to be, it needs to be four inches tall on a commercial building and six inches. That's one of them. One of the other one is to have signs at a, so if you have a driveway that's on a marked road and has seven houses on it, we want those seven address signs at the front of the driveway, not on every house on the way down. Okay? We talk about a lighted directory for an apartment complex that has more than 15 units. What that looks like is a map out by the driveway so we know what units were. So when we get called to building A, unit five, our engine company knows where to go to get there. We're talking about Knox, they call them key boxes. It's a Knox box. We're already enforcing that as a district. This clarifies that it has to be a UL-listed box of a certain type, which is a Knox box in most cases. It has a maintenance schedule within here so the owner knows when they rekey their building, they need to let us know so we can put a new key in the box. It talks about labeling, putting the penal code on fire, on fire roads or on, sorry, red curbs, both private and public. That's the main part of what we're, of what we're changing within the fire code. Nothing in here is going to make anything more expensive for building. I mean, I guess for an apartment building of 15 units or more, it's going to cost them an extra $200 to put a sign up, but that's, that's what, that's what we're looking at. And if you'd like, I'm happy to go over any of this with anyone offline. We can do it tonight, we can do it next week, but what I would like, or next, next month. If we have questions, I'd love to have an offline meeting. I want to make sure that you all are comfortable with what we're presenting, and I don't want any questions as we go into adoption, so I'm happy to do any of that with anyone that would like it.
Well, we're not going to have an offline meeting. You know, this is public information.
So... Yeah.
If there's questions from the council, chances are there's somebody in the public who has the same question.
Or if we'd like to make an ad hoc, I guess is what I meant.
Okay.
You mentioned that, I think earlier you said something about, this isn't changing anything that wasn't already there, but you said, absent the state. Is there something that you want to point out? State has changed?
No, I mean, the state tweaks and changes the code every time it comes through. There's nothing super specific I know that's come through, other than we have a new WUI code. But even that WUI code, what it really is, is it's...
Can you spell WUI?
WUI. It's Wildland Urban Interface Interchange. Has to do with the fire severity maps and things like that. Even the things within that WUI code or that Wildland Urban Interface Code are pre-existing laws. So it's things like the 4290 that you're familiar with, with maybe CalFire. That information's in there, and it's now in the state code. Title 14 for access requirements for different projects or single-family homes. We use Title 14, now that's in the WUI code.
What about, what about Zone Zero?
Zone Zero is in the code, however, the implementation of what the state is going to be asking us to do is not yet clear.
See, but that's where my concern comes in.
We haven't changed anything with Zone Zero, and we cannot be less restricted than the state. So there's nothing we can do about that as of right now. There's nothing we can do as that, as a district or a city. We can't be less restricted than what the state tells us to do.
Jim, is that your understanding?
Yes, that is. You can be more restrictive, but not less.
Did something change about that? I understood that the cities were not required to adopt the state's building code standards. Am I wrong about that?
Well, this is a fire codes.
No, well, I'm, it's a...
The city, the city does, the city does adopt the uniform codes.
But I, but I understand that, but do they have to?
I don't know the answer to that.
That's my question.
Typically speaking, if codes aren't adopted by the city or agency, they automatically become law still within the state. So if you didn't adopt them, you'd be out of compliance with that state law, and they would still stand. No city or government or district can be less restrictive than what the state puts out. So typically...
I mean, I understand that principle in federal versus state and all that. I'm just, it's not consistent with my understanding from previous years as being the situation with the building code relative to, to an incorporated city and having to be in conformance with the state. So I, and I guess that puts it back on me to prove somebody...
So tonight is, there's no action taken by us. This is just a discussion, introduction, the ordinance. So, see, are any questions?
I just wanted to clarify, I mean, I make sure I understand this. It's resolution here, has a number of sections on the back here, talking about 500, so on. Those are in the ordinance as you talked about, in the ordinance here. The beginning of the ordinance actually starts with changes to sections starting with the 100s, not the 500s. Is, is that because this is specifically referring to the local climatic geological and the 100s are really just bureaucratic wording that's changing?
More or less. So those 100s, so the fire code reads this code.
Okay.
The agency has to adopt it and put their name into that code so that it doesn't become this code. It's the City of Willits code, or it's the Little Lake Fire District code. So those 100s are those changes.
Okay.
That aren't more restrictive than the code. It's just the information that we need to put in in order to make it, the code make sense within a jurisdiction.
Yeah. And as far as the resolution's concerned, these are the actual...
Those are the actual...
...safety things that we're talking about.
Those are the changes to the code, yeah.
Any other questions from council? I'm good. All right, to the public, does anybody have any questions regarding the introduction and discussion of ordinance by title only, the Willits, the City of Willits adopting a 2025 edition of the California Fire Code Part 9 with amendments? Do you have any comments? By all means, come on up. Watch out, chief, he's going to get right behind you.
Okay.
Yeah, right, right there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just state your name and by all means.
Gilbert Vanhanian. I've been a resident of Willits since March.
Okay.
And I'm wondering if the public will get a copy of the handout.
It's online with the, so Dolores is right there.
This is what I, I just gave to council. It's the resolution that we're supposed to pass when we pass the ordinance, but the ordinance is available online on the City of Willits website in the agenda packet.
Great, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else, any other public comments?
The resolution.
Okay, public comment is closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, moving on to the Little Lake Fire District.
Appreciate your information.
Monthly update. Chief?
Cool, I just wanted to, real quick, thanks, Matt, for...
Thank you very much.
Helping us. He's been helping 10 to 15 other fire departments with the same process. For me being a new chief, kind of, he's walking you through, so I appreciate that. For the Little Lake Fire Report, we just had our haunted house, great success. Everybody get a chance to walk through it. Super fun. Glad we could bring that to the community. Safe place for everybody to come with their, their families and on that Halloween night. Michelle has been working diligently for the inflatable, the educational inflatable or a bounce house. I just wanted to give a shout out to Jen from 101 Trailer. She was able to secure funding from the Willits Educational Foundation for that, and the district and the association will also donate $1,000 towards that. That'll help with the, the training for Brookside or the kids that come in. Very informational, cool, cool house for them to walk through and get the fire line safety that they need. For the training, month of October, five-man engine company drills to stimulate structure fires as we're moving into these winter months and out of the wildland season. EMT refresher, cover trauma assessment, and that's patient packaging, vitals, and all that kind of good stuff, broken bones. Community training consisted of hosting three days of the Brookside School little ones. They came over for their fire line safety education, and when we get to bounce house, we can integrate that. CPR and AED awareness was taught to the Brookside staff, and we had 40 members attend for that. If anybody in the community or business is interested in fire extinguisher training, please reach out to us. As of date, we have responded to 563 calls for service. Informational reminder, I hit this all the time, we kind of touched on it a little bit up here about the importance of visible addresses. We've ran up to one in the Hurst-Willits area. It just makes it difficult for medicals. We're going to see the fire and kind of where to go, but the medicals is a little tougher. We did have the Wildland Fire Insurance Forum that was held on October 9th, if anybody was able to attend. Very informational. With the current transition into the winter months, expect heavy rain, icy conditions. Please give yourself ample time to get your designation, along with the holiday traffic on the road. Kind of want to be known for a fire department, but our number one calls here are traffic collisions due to our location with the 101, 162, and Highway 20. So, other than that, thank you.
All right, chief, thank you very much. Any questions for the chief? Any public comment for the fire chief, fire department, Little Lake Fire Department? Hearing none, thank you very much. We all appreciate what you're doing, chief.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I respond back to Councilmember Burton about whether cities are required to adopt the state codes?
Certainly, because I think I have the answer for that. And the answer's yes. California cities are required to adopt the state's fire codes as they are mandated to enforce the California Building Standards Code titled 24, which includes the fire codes. Local governments have the authority to modify the state codes, but the modifications must be formally adopted by ordinance and justified by findings that they are necessary due to local climatic, geological, or topo-geographical conditions.
So they can?
The local jurisdiction can modify. You have to adopt the fire, the state code, but you can make modifications that are needed for your locality.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on. Third District Supervisor John Hashak is not here. He did provide a report, which is in the agenda. It's interesting that this county is going into, they went into a new fiscal year with $11 million in the bank. Kind of interesting. They said they were broke. All right, enactment of ordinance or none? So we have any, any comment about Little Lake month report or third district supervisor? Public comment? All right, public comment's closed. Consent calendar. So we have two items, three items, I'm sorry, on the consent calendar. We have the special meeting from October 22nd minutes, the regular meeting from October 22nd minutes, and a resolution of the City Council to extend the agreement with Laco for interim city manager services and continue with Roddy Wilburn as interim city council, city manager.
I move the consent calendar.
Move?
My second motion.
Second. Is there any public discussion? Nikki.
My name's Nikki Caldwell. I would like to ask changes to the minutes from the last city council meetings. There are a couple of statements that are just plain not true. One, the approved scope of work for MTC firm Ms. Muchmore. It was asked for approval in item 9B NC4. Receive presentation, discuss, and provide staff direction related to city manager recruitment. It has become clear that MTC firm is doing much more than just this. Second, Ms. Muchmore's statement about not getting paid. It is in the minutes. That little lie did not go over well. Ms. Muchmore knew last city council meeting that she would be paid with her contract to not exceed $25,000. The contract was already in the making. She started her employment with the city based on lies distrust with both. Scope of work and payment. Thank you.
What's in the record is factual. Her contract was not signed until October 24th, so she was doing pro bono work at that meeting.
Okay.
She was not getting paid for the, the recruitment presentation that she provided. So she provided that along with the resolution because of the hiring of Bob Richardson, who's an, an annuitant, and, and the importance of having everything in order with respect to the resolution and open recruitment for a new city manager.
So the contract is not backdated?
Contract is dated October 24th, two days after the meeting. So she's not getting paid, she did not get paid for any work prior to that date.
Okay, any other public comment regarding the consent calendar?
I would just, I would, I would add, I guess I could wait, but it's, it's relevant to the contract extension to December 5th with one week overlap before Bob Richardson starts on December 1st as the new interim city manager. I would also point out that what was in that contract, our original contract, was that Laco associates cannot have any other contracts with the city for a period of one year following this contract. So, so that's, if I remember correctly, those are the verbiage. So, um, I think it's an important point to, to make, given that.
Okay, with that being said, any other additional public comment? When once going twice, public comments closed to the council. We have a, a motion and a second for approval of consent counter.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Transky?
Yes.
Alanese?
Yes.
Amen.
Aye. All right, um, the, we have monthly activity reports that are in the packet of, uh, for tonight's agenda, we have the accounts payable activity report, the building permit activity report, and the business license activity report. Does the council have, there is no required action, however, does the council have any questions, we'll go to the public.
Yeah, I've got some questions.
Okay.
About, uh, looking at the AP. All right?
Okay.
And in the AP, there is, uh, let's see, on page three, there is, at the bottom, check 418, no, 41487, excuse me. I was just kinda curious about why there's, why there's two listings there. I mean, first of all, one's for 98 cents and the other one's for $4, but they're the same, they're going to the same person, they're from the same account, and it's the same check number. So I was just kinda curious about, what does that mean when we see stuff like that?
It's more of a deposit account being reimbursed, so after we, um, close out the account and everything, there was a balance left over and we're required to reimburse.
And this individual got reimbursed from the Water Enterprise Fund?
Yes.
$4.98, okay.
Okay. Um, I have another question about one of the vendors, I want to see, it's on page six, Pistachio Films.
I saw that too, but I think it's probably the guy that's doing the meetings.
You're a pistachio?
Yeah.
It's nutty. Okay, so that's Pistachio Films, okay, good enough. I, I wrongly assumed it had something with pistachios in which I was hoping there would be a great conversation, but that's okay, snacks, that's okay. All right, that's, that's the two that popped out to me, I just, sometimes a lot of that, there's, there's double pay, I mean, why do we, we're cutting a check for $4, is that what I just did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to cut the checks out in order to be able to
And why does it show up as two different lines? If it's the same check from the same account or in the same person?
Oh, I can get back to it. Three.
Yeah, page three on the AP, 41487.
He's talking about the other one.
Same day, same year, same account.
I can look into it right now. So for that one, 41487.
I mean, each one of these entries take time, you know, so this took time to do two separate entries, and I'm just kinda curious about, why are we making two separate entries if it's the same thing?
It's probably an auto-generated one, but I'm gonna look at it real quickly here.
Okay.
Yeah, it's auto-generated. So the system, as it processes the reimbursement back, that looks like it was two different subsections from the, um, from the utility billing.
Okay, so presumably there's two subsections in there?
Yeah, there was, there was just two subsections. So what it was, was that the system automatically puts those things in, and so, and it does it by two separate line items.
Okay, well, I do like the way this is formatted for the previous months, the way you put the vendors together, it makes more sense, I think, for my perspective. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I, just one, a simple one, uh, I'm a big fan of Dave Edgar, uh, but I, I thought Clifford, uh, was doing our janitorial stuff, I just, his.
Dave Edgar is the janitor for the Willets Police Department, um, Clifford, um, for City Hall.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from council? Any public comments regarding the, um, monthly reports? Hearing none, public comment's closed, and it's not required, council, uh, any kind of approval? Okay, we are meeting as concurrently as the Willet City, City Willets Planning Commission and the City Willets Successor Agency for now until we can, I'll do that. To the interim city manager, your report?
Other than this is my last meeting, Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for allowing me to, to help as best I can over the last seven months. I have just, um, it's been an interesting, interesting time, uh, what started as, um, just keep the seat warm assignment turned into a lot more. Um, I'm, I'm kinda miss the council meetings and miss working with everybody, but, uh, I, my, the engineers in my company are looking forward to having me come back and spend more time at Laco, so that's, that's all I have to say, I appreciate it, I appreciate that opportunity.
Well, I certainly appreciate what you know about numbers that you've delved into the budget. Any comments from, regarding the city manager report?
I just want to thank, thank Rod for coming in and, uh, kinda holding, uh, holding our hands through this.
Likewise, thank you.
All right, to the public, any comments regarding the city manager report? Hearing none, public comment is closed, okay. Um, so we are going to, under item number nine, we are going to put, um, number B as in the first item, discussion and possible introduction of amendment to Willets Municipal Code Title 17, zoning revising Chapter 17.66 supplemental provisions and adding Chapter 17.87 mobile vendors to establish regulations for mobile and sidewalk vending. Presenting member, Swaytha, um, Venuto De Poli, and she is a senior city planner in the building. Swaytha, thank you.
All the TVs work, that's wonderful.
Good job.
Good evening, everyone, and good evening to the council members. Uh, so to start off, we wanted to introduce, uh, do an introduction to the mobile vendors ordinance and also do, uh, an amendment for the chap, one of the chapters in the ordinance currently. So the purpose of this ordinance is to create a clear and consistent, consistent rules for mobile vendors and also sidewalk vendors. Uh, it aims to promote economic opportunities while also ensuring that these operations are compatible with existing businesses, uh, and also protect the downtown's history and architectural character and preserve that. Uh, public health, safety, and welfare are number one priority while drafting the, this ordinance. Uh, and also with the sidewalk vending ordinance, it aligns with the SB 946, the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act. Overall, it tries to, the ordinance is to balance flexibility for vendors within the community itself. So the scope of this ordinance is, it adds the chapter 17.87 to the zoning code Title 17, and apply, it, this applies to both mobile vending units and sidewalk vendors, and covers both public and private property operations, and it also provides standards for location, design, operations, and permitting to ensure safe and compliance. Key definitions, just to understand what, what a mobile vendor is, sidewalk vendor, and a mobile vending unit. A mobile vendor is any person who peddles, wends, sells, serves, displays, offers to, for sale, or gives away food, beverages, and/or goods from any motorized or non-motorized vehicles. A sidewalk vendor is one who sells from pushcart stands, et cetera, on sidewalks or pedestrian pathways. And a mobile vending unit is a motorized vehicle such as a food truck operated at city-approved locations or routes. Understanding these definitions is key because regulations differ for each type. Just a little background on how we started with this, so in 1929, the chapter 5.28 prohibited vending from main and commercial streets to control the downtown activity. And chapter 18, 19, uh, chapter 17.66, which, which was established in 1985, allows temporarily peddlers with limits, uh, with limits, uh, to four to seven day periods per year. We requested, we request in this meeting to amend this chapter 17.66, which limits vendors from operating, uh, for a limited amount of period within a, an annual year. The, the new ordinance modernizes these rules, providing clarity for both vendors and the city. We tried to do a lot of community outreach from 2024, and here's a table of all the different meetings that we have been doing to gather input for the ordinance since last June 2024. Meetings and surveys included different mobile vendors, brick and mortar businesses, and also the public. We also conducted different meetings with mobile vendors and brick and mortar businesses separately and gathered input. Council formed an ad hoc committee on the March 12th committee meeting, and we had multiple sessions with the ad hoc committee and gathered input and ensured that all perspectives were considered before drafting this ordinance. We did a bunch of research and reviewed different regional ordinances from Ukiah, Fort Bragg, Windsor, Santa Rosa, Calistoga, and evaluated all the best practices and compliance with SB 946 to ensure that we are drafting an ordinance and making sure that it relates to our current context. And these inform Willets ordinance to balance of public safety, accessibility, and also ensure economic opportunities. On our 23rd council meet, uh, ad hoc committee meeting, uh, the council emphasized, uh, it was a public meeting with brick and mortar businesses, uh, general public, and also different food truck owners, and the council, uh, emphasized on private property operations and no vending on Main Street to protect the downtown character, and also, uh, suggested a no cap on vendor numbers per parcel, and the zoning to be limited to industrial and commercial districts, and also set a buffer of 50 feet from residential areas. And we reviewed, uh, a lot of regulatory compliance that aligns with California Health and Safety Code, uh, and that ensures that vendors operating over one hour require restroom access within 200 feet. Uh, these are just some of the mobile vending permit requirements. Mobile vendors must obtain a zoning permit and a business license, and the application includes all operating, uh, locations must be specified, site plan, and, uh, the mobile vending unit photos, uh, property authorization, uh, county health permit, vehicle registration, itinerary permit, uh, product list, seller's permit, generator information, and outdoor dining details if applicable, and just to note that zoning permits must be renewed annually by December 31st.
Mayor, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I need to interrupt for just half a second. I, I should've had this epiphany a while back, I do have a mobile vendor on my property.
Oh, great.
So I'm going to recuse myself from this, uh, issue.
Okay.
Sorry.
Please continue on.
Yes, and these are some of the permit requirements for sidewalk vendors. Sidewalk vendors also need a zoning permit and a business license, and they must include an encroachment permit because sidewalk vendors mostly operate on public right-of-way, and also include the location details, liability insurance, car drawings and photos, county health permit, product description, and seller's permit, and other applicable licenses, and this ensures that the cities are in compliant with the city and the state regulations. Permits also expire annually and must be displayed at all times. These are some of the standards that we highlighted for mobile vendors, particularly, uh, mobile vendors are allowed in commercial zones, general mixed use, Main Street, mixed use, uh, industrial and industrial zones, and they are not allowed, mobile vendors are not allowed on public right-of-way, which means streets, sidewalks, or alleys. And they must operate on public property and maintain the traffic, uh, flow and required parking, which means that they can have shared sites are allowed if the parking and setbacks remain compliant and with, and this is during operating and non-operating hours of the primary business. And the hours of mobile vendors, uh, is supposed to be from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM unless it is a, a part of any city-approved event. And for operating standards of mobile vendors, uh, all mobile vendors must obtain a building and fire department approvals before operating, uh, display their business license and zoning, zoning permit at all times, equipment and the noise, uh, the generators must meet the state standards, uh, units must be clean and graffiti free, and, uh, the, coming to buffers for, uh, mobile vendors, uh, mobile vendors must maintain a 50 feet, uh, from residential zones, 400 feet from middle and high schools, 350 feet from elementary schools. We established the, the buffers for schools after speaking with the school superintendent, and, uh, restroom maxes, like I mentioned earlier, must be within 200 feet for operations over one hour for the vending, uh, the mobile vending employees. And here is just a map, uh, to understand how, uh, the buffers work within a residential zone and school districts. If there is a school at, at all times, uh, there must be a buffer of 400 feet off of schools and 50 feet off of residential zones.
Is that 400 feet as in, as a crow flies, or 400 feet as a road goes?
400 feet as a profile.
As a crow flies, okay.
Can I ask a question regarding residential zone? So hypothetically, I was hosting a wedding and had a food truck come to be my cater, would that fall into this, or is that a different sort of, or they cater that day and not so much, uh, mobile vendors?
Right, in that case, it would fall under a special event, and the private property owner would require, uh, they would require to come, get an approval, and give us all the details about the event and get the approval, once it's approved, then a mobile vendor can operate.
Okay, because I know some, some of them operate, do businesses that way, they'll cater events?
Correct.
Or, or, thanks, okay.
But that definitely comes under a special event, uh, rather than a general, uh, mobile vending standards.
Okay, so what do the black lines indicate? As in, you can't be there?
Yes, so the black lines, the, the black lines are the buffers, and the red cells is either the school, and the orange is to show that those are the residential zones.
I thought, um, one of the, at one of the meetings we talked about, on East Commercial, right here at Snyder Park, on this side, on East Commercial, and no other park, that they would be able to park here.
So from the last meeting, we noted in our ordinance that it is, uh, mobile vendors are off of any public property or public right-of-way and are allowed only on private property.
Okay, I don't, I, I've been at every meeting we've had, and I don't remember specifically, we talked about not being on Main Street or the side street around the downtown area?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I mean, what we're gonna, we, we can, we're gonna talk about things tonight, I just wanna make sure I understood what your black line meant, thank you.
Yeah. And now coming to sidewalk vendors again, uh, just to define it again, uh, it's defined as a vendors selling from non-motorized vehicles, uh, non-motorized, uh, units, or from one person's on public sidewalks or paths. And sidewalk vendors are, uh, are guided through the SB 946 by the state, uh, and it is to decriminalize any sidewalk vending standards. Local restrictions must be only health, safety, and welfare-based, and not about economic competition. Cities may require different, uh, permits, which is business license, uh, health permits, and reasonable rules for vending in sensitive areas. Coming to sidewalk vendor standards, uh, a maximum of two, uh, stationary carts per block face in commercial and industrial areas is approved, and by a block face, it is any sidewalk that is on a block. As, uh, uh, each block can have multiple sidewalks or multiple streets adjoining it, and two stationary carts per sidewalk on one face of the block. And stationary carts are not allowed in residential areas, only mobile carts can be operated, and with a limit of 10 minutes, uh, of them stopping at each, uh, location. Carts must be removed after closing, no chaining or leaving unattended, and location time and restrictions are, no vending within 300 feet of any city-approved events unless authorized or a part or a part of the event, no vending in parks with exclusive vendor agreements, or 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Not allowed in any city-owned property without approval, and/or within 500 feet of schools, and it's prohibited from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Coming to operating standards for mobile vendors, mobile vendors in residential areas must keep moving, stopping maximum of 10 minutes, like I mentioned earlier. Vendors provide their own trash bins, maintain a 10-feet radius, a clean radius, and carts must not endanger safety. And each cart requires a valid zoning permit and must follow all the permit terms and laws, and permits are non-transitable and cover only one cart. And all the sidewalk vendors must comply to area, ensuring accessible paths, and are not blocked. Hence, we request for the cart dimensions and also the routes that the carts will be taking in residential areas.
So I noticed in Yukaya, I've seen the guy, carts that sell ice cream. That would be an example of like a mobile vendor cart. So they move around the town selling their ice cream.
Yes. So if it's non-motorized, it comes under as a sidewalk vendor, but they are not allowed to stop for more than 10 minutes.
Okay.
And coming to exemptions, this ordinance does not apply to solitaires representing any religious, charitable, or educational youth, or any political organizations. Also exempts persons covered by federal and state constitutional or statutory protections.
What about the guys that sell, I guess are signing people up for the free phones? Is that, what does that fall under?
Free phones.
Yeah, you see them at different parking lots where they'll say, free phone, come qualify.
Yes.
There's usually a line of people there, I've seen them here.
They do fall under the, any charitable organization.
I don't think they're charitable, I think they're making money.
If they do not fall under one of those categories, then they have to get a permit. And if it's a temporary event that they want to be a part of, they still have to come to the, come to the planning department, get an approval of them using that space or the public right-of-way, and then only be permitted.
So I want to make sure I understand this, so if somebody has a hot dog wagon, they can't stop for more than 10 minutes at any location?
At residential areas.
At what?
At residential areas.
Oh, residential areas.
In commercial and industrial, they are, they have no restrictions, and can set up during the hours that are mentioned, but again, they need to have their zoning permit and business license application with them at all times.
And to council, is this what the new regulations were coming from the state, or the court decision?
Right, well, that provided that you cannot criminalize someone with a citation for mobile vending, you can't, you can't not allow it, it's something that is allowable now, it's not something that could be.
So let's say somebody had a taco wagon and went in front of El Mexicano on a sidewalk and wanted his tacos. Could we prohibit that?
Well, I just heard you say that there are no restrictions on a commercial zone for the sidewalk vendor.
That's right.
I'd have to look into that.
I really don't want sidewalk vendors stopping in front of our restaurants and, you know, hocking their food.
But the way the ordinance is now drafted and presented to you, there is not that prohibition.
Well, we haven't voted on it, so.
If you had a, if you had a mobile cart, non-motorized, that met the state definition of a sidewalk vendor, and we've copied that definition into our ordinance, and they wanted to sell tacos in front of a Mexican restaurant, and it was otherwise consistent with state law, yes, they could do that.
And we're not allowed to prohibit that, is that what you're saying?
We, to the earlier conversation, we cannot be less restrictive than the state, we can only be more, yeah.
But a motorized, like an actual food truck couldn't pull in?
Correct, so a food truck, so a mobile vendor is not subject to the Sidewalk Vending Act, is not defined as a sidewalk vendor, is a mobile food truck, it's gas-powered, they could not park on the street in front of a Mexican restaurant.
You said we can be more prohibitive in the state, but not less prohibitive, is that what you said?
We can be more prohibitive, not less prohibitive.
So why couldn't we prohibit a wagon, is that right?
Right, that's, that would be more restrictive, I would think that if we, if we have the ability to be more restrictive, then perhaps we can do that.
And maybe this is talking about a problem that's not even going to be there.
Right.
Because I, one of the things that we talk to the public, one of the things our food truck meetings have talked about is, we don't know what the problems are going to be. There could be only three food trucks that are going to be in Willett, we don't know. And this is not something that, if it is passed, is going to be the legacy of, and forever the way it is, we can adapt as we go along, because we don't know what the issues are, so, all right. Any other questions?
Well, I was just going to say that it seems like you could be restrictive is one thing, because we switched language there in the middle there. So we can be restrictive, but since we're talking about restrictive, it's actually would be the opposite, the negative, so it means we could do less, not more. So we can do more restrictions, but since that would be less, not more. Anyway, that's not clarifying, but.
When you, when you read through, when you read through SB 946, it doesn't allow us to restrict sidewalk vendors from operating in front of businesses due to concerns about competition.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions from the public, or from the council, I'm sorry?
I think it goes to the public.
All right, to the public. Thank you very much, Mayor.
I'm Bear Cameroff, I've tried to study these laws a bit, and I believe possible answer to your question about a sidewalk vendor showing up in front of El Mexicano is that you have a right to restrict operations where there's obstruction on the sidewalk, where there's blocking, where there's an issue of getting by them, where there's an issue of safety because it's crowded. And that is how apparently cities use that to control sidewalk vendors who, where they legally cannot stop them from competing. Because I know a lot of people are confused about SB 946 is just for the non-motorized, and the motorized ones, the ones you're most worried about, you have a lot of restrictions on. But there's one, one little point that maybe is important, is that the mobile vendors, the motorized, according to state law, also includes trailers, trailers, you know, being pulled by trucks. And I think that probably should be made clear in that, because I don't hear it here. Because it's, trailer is not motorized, but state law does include those trailers. So that should be an important distinction in there, just so somebody didn't try to, you know, wiggle out of it. The other thing is, they have to meet local noise ordinances, I don't know, does Willett's have a local noise ordinance at all? We don't. And so therefore, a loud generator would have to meet whatever they call state standards, and that could be a major issue for wherever, is always a major issue, particularly if there's more than one food vendor, those generators are awful loud. Anyway, that was my comments.
All right, thank you. Other public comment? Nikki?
Hi, my name is Nikki Galvold. I do have a couple questions, sadly I wasn't able to make the meetings. I hear in the presentation that, you know, we promote the economy and we do this, but are we really, if we allow them three to four days a year to be working, that is one day per quarter, how do you expect any of them to be like having a jiving job if we allow them one day a quarter to work? And I get it, they not only have city, they can go somewhere else, but I wonder if we're not having too many limitations on them. And don't get me wrong, I cherish all of our brick-and-mortars, but for me, I personally like them, I cannot see any of them parking their trailer in front of a school and sell or whatever. I would just hope that we could make it a little bit more fair, because I don't think they're here to harm anyone, I think they're here for a living, and they shouldn't be, I think it feels like they're being punished for not being a brick-and-mortar, and I don't agree with that. Thank you.
So Dusty, I thought we were, one of the positive things about us looking at a new ordinance is getting rid of that 28-day requirement that was passed in 1985.
Yeah, the recommendation we got from the ad hoc committee was to delete that, and that's the, what's being proposed in the ordinance.
So Nikki, we're getting rid of that?
Yeah.
It was passed in 1985, but it was kind of antiquated.
Okay, yeah, I just, I'm in the meeting, and sadly, like I said, I'll.
Okay, are there any food truck vendors who would like to comment on this? Any brick-and-mortar restaurateurs that would like to comment on this? Okay, public comments, close to the council. We have a discussion, possible introduction of an amendment, which means that we could approve the amendment discussion today, but then we will have at the next meeting in December, we will, just like the other fire department discussion we had, we can have other changes and so forth. So, we have in front of us. Counsel?
Well, I'll go first. You know, I want to support our brick-and-mortar, at the same time I know that the states changed their rules, so obviously if I want to push my hot dog cart around and do certain things, I'm kind of limited. I have questions too regarding, I think San Francisco's dealing with folks just setting up and selling stuff, not just food, that they're dealing with, and it's an issue down there, I guess in parts, because watching the news on that. So I would kind of want any sort of ordinance to kind of maybe envelop that too, just because if that's going to be an issue. I see at times we have folks that are selling stuff around town, especially on the holidays and stuff, so if that needs to be tied in with this, just so that we kind of do all our cleanup at once, and basically get us in compliance with what the state says, so that our brick-and-mortar know when they call up, hey, this guy rolled his hot dog cart up, sorry, this is what the law says, and we're in compliance. And then obviously we can deal, like what Bear said, if there's issues regarding, then the police department has clear direction, you know, as far as folks crowding on the street, or there's traffic issues or something like that. So I think I would support the cleanup and this in general, I just would just want to be all-inclusive and get it, get all those things tied up.
Will there be, will we be able to see the regulations and ordinances online prior to, we just went?
Yes, they're online now.
Online right now, okay. So just like a, everything, okay.
Okay.
I just want, I just wanted to say thank you to staff for working on this complicated issue, especially the work that Ms. Vinatu Apolli did for us. It's not easy to put all this stuff together. And I want to remind everybody that as part of the ad hoc, you know, we're not going to get all the answers right now, we're going to do what best we can right now, and the idea has always been in the next six months or next year, to go back and change anything that comes up. We just can't foresee every single problem, and things we think might work might not work. You know, we may need to create a noise ordinance, if we didn't know if that's going to be this year or not, we'll see, and we may have to do other stuff. But anyway, I just want people to realize that this is a, this is an organic thing that we're working through, and we're going to try to find something that works best for everybody.
Organic food ordinance, that's pretty good. To staff, is there any public location where a food truck could park and sell their food in Willett's, if this goes through as it is?
When you say a public location, like a city-owned property?
Public property, I'm not saying the city owns it, but it's public property, such as the Little League soccer field parking lot.
Yeah, so, and I'll answer it in the context of a mobile food vendor like a food truck.
Right.
So yes, the ordinance, the way it's currently written, if the city authorized a food vendor to set up at the, at the sports complex parking lot on East Commercial down the street here, the ordinance would allow that with city permission and otherwise being consistent with the ordinance.
So it would be the same.
And that would be outside of a special event. When we talk about special events, then, you know, these, these standards aren't necessarily applying as far as location restrictions.
So during Frontier Days, then?
It's a special event.
Yeah, it's a special event.
Right, right.
So somebody couldn't set up over there and.
Yeah, and since Marcy's here, I'll just note, we did recall the situation that happened before, and whether you're a mobile food vendor or a sidewalk vendor, there's a, the way that the ordinance is currently drafted, there'd be a 300-foot restriction for any vendor operating from the boundaries of the event itself.
Okay. Well, there's going to be, I predict we're going to find ways to tweak this for the better, but we need to get started somewhere, so it's a.
Do you want to make a motion? If you want. That would ring for a motion.
Yep.
Okay, in that case, I would like to make a motion to conduct a public hearing and introduce reading of the title and waiving further reading of proposed ordinance.
I'll second.
Okay, we have first and second.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
All in the East.
All right, all right. Could someone ask Bruce to come back in, please? All right, so moving on, now we'll get to the discussion and possible introduction. So if you were here for the food truck thing, you won't hurt our feelings if you leave.
Good.
Okay, but we will discuss it again at our meeting in December.
Thank you, it sounds really good.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Jill.
As good as your sandwiches? Ah, not quite.
They're wigwams, something to die for.
Oh.
The wigwag.
We said they can roll up and sell.
You have a stromic.
Mobile cart.
You can hear your arteries close.
I don't know why I didn't think, you know. Oh, I know, I'm sitting there going, then I got thinking, yeah, I think I've seen a mobile cart.
Well, yeah.
It's Jim, I'm talking.
Thanks, Jim, you're welcome to stay.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Wisdom, wisdom, please, yes, that's great.
All right, moving on to discussion and possible introduction, proposed ordinance amending the city water service ordinance at Title 14 of the Willett Municipal Code, Chapter 14.08, revising the definition of applicant for water source and definition of an owner of property, and Jim Lance, the city attorney, is a presenting staff member.
This item is on to clean up some confusing language in our water code that has been used by someone who sued the city a couple of years ago. There was a vacant house, and it had been red-tagged, and people moved inside of it and squatted there, and then came down to the city and applied for water service, representing that they were the owner. And this applicant sued the city when his water service was shut off, and made the argument that he was an adverse possessor, was in the process of trying to acquire title due to his adverse possession, which is something that can happen if someone is there for up to five years, pays the taxes and so forth, and does it hostilely with a notice to the owner, they can so acquire a title. And that was his argument, and unfortunately, our code kind of helped him out on that, because the definition of an owner included not just a fee owner of record title, but someone who is holding themselves out as the owner, acting as the owner, exercising control over the property with a claim of ownership, and that's what he said he was doing. So I'm proposing that we make some changes, minor changes to the definitions of the words applicant and owner that will eliminate that claim, and the city's liability insurer, SERA, they have recommended that we do this.
Is this a standard verbiage for most cities?
You know what, I, it's not really standard, I did Google this definition of owner, and I think I came up with three cities in the state that have this language, and for some reason ours has it, but I don't see any harm in just eliminating that language about a claimant exercising acts of ownership, and require that our, an applicant for water service has to be an owner, or someone who's acting on behalf of the owner with the owner's knowledge and approval, so that's what, that's what this ordinance would do.
I move.
I second.
Okay, public comment? Okay, public comment. Hearing none, public comments closed. We have a motion and a second to approve the introduction of proposed ordinance amending the city's water service ordinance, Title 14.
And waiving the reading of the ordinance.
Waive.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Almane.
Yes.
Almane.
Aye. All right. City council announcements, communications, and reports. And we're going to just include the good and welfare. So at 10:11, so we'll start with Bruce.
A couple of things. Number one, I wanted to thank Dusty for providing that information to me on the activities of the building department. Exactly what I was looking for. And, you know, I, just to keep things going lively here at City Hall in the future, I'd like to, at some point, see the city council agendize for a future discussion the removal of the bike lanes on Main Street. I don't think that they fulfill the purpose that they're adequately used to sacrifice the on-street parking for our downtown merchants. So I'd like to have a discussion about that sometime.
We can have that discussion. I have lots of questions, but I'm not going to waste everybody's time right here. Anything else?
No.
Okay, Jerry.
I apologize for not, for missing the last two meetings. The first one, October 8th, I was at a wedding, and my niece was getting married up in Boise, and we attended. And the last meeting, I did attend the closed session, but I was down at the LAVCO conference in San Diego. And that's where I was during the last meeting. So I apologize, but I'm back.
Okay. Anything, Larry?
Yes, I have Mendocino Solid Waste Management meeting at 9:00 tomorrow morning.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, on November 3rd, I attended an INCOG meeting. It included a tour of the local projects that INCOG had funded. We stood, we basically say in your KIA, I don't know if we do all this stuff, but it was an excellent way of educating myself about what I need to know, what INCOG is doing and where it's spending the money, and how that money turns into plans, and how that plans turn into items, and how the items turn into stuff. So it really was a very informative tour. Coming up here, today being the 12th, we have a finance committee next week.
We changed the time.
At 4:00.
4:00.
At 4:00, yes. A finance committee will be meeting here on November 19th. That's next Wednesday. Also, I wanted to share with you something that has been announced on social media. On November 22nd, they are holding a town hall at the Little Lake Grange to address people's concerns about local food security. So if that is a concern for you, or if you have something to say about it, you have your own issues, please consider coming to the Little Lake Grange on November 22nd at 11:00 a.m. And I'm sure you can find something online to, if you need to contact somebody from Little Lake about that. But a very important discussion to be had, for sure. Additionally, even though we do have another meeting coming up on December 10th, on December 11th, Willett's High School is having our Hot Winters Nights. So for those of you who are interested in supporting the local community, especially the children, they have a wonderful show that they put on, including some musical aspects, some food they put out. And it's really just a fun night to have if you haven't checked it out before. That's happening on December 11th. Willett's High School football team meeting to the playoffs. So go Wolverines. So for those of you who are interested, stay tuned in that. Hopefully, we'll have a home game here pretty soon. So much more to go. But thank you very much, everybody, and happy Thanksgiving. And happy Veterans Day for all those who serve our country.
Rod, once again, thank you for stepping up and helping us for the last seven months. Your dedication to the city is very appreciated and visible. So thank you for that. It is 7:00.
I got a good and welfare that I need to announce.
Oh, you have good and welfare, go.
We do. On November 15th, the Willett Center for the Arts is holding their 25th year anniversary celebration. And it starts at 5:30 and ends at 7:30. The Cosmic Family Band will be there. And they wanted me to let council know and the community know that they are having their 25th anniversary at the Arts Center.
Okay.
Tom?
Yes.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Manny, it's just my monthly, where do we stand? What are your cash...
It looks like he's ready for the answer.
So in the main account, there's $2,224,360. Payroll has $307,000. Life has $558,000. And US Bank has 5.3 million in it, along with Savings Bank. Savings having $35,000 in it as well. Two additional accounts that we found due to a training that I went to, slash, event, is express bill pay and PathPoint. And there's one more that I'm seeking, which is a fuel account. That is, these are all processor accounts that were developed during the implementation that required drawdowns. So in those two accounts that I do know of, there's $175,000 in there and $106,000 that's ready to be drawn down. So there are certain limitations. And we're currently researching that now and exactly how much we can draw down without causing penalties.
So have you had to cash any securities or savings?
Nothing yet.
Okay. Thank you.
And to Walter, for the good of the public, the status of the rails to trails is what?
It's been moving along. Right now, there's weather concerns. All the bridges have been accepted in. We've taken them in, but they're not going to be installed till spring.
Right.
Most of the concrete has been poured. They're going to see how much they get in.